All right, good afternoon. We'll call the meeting to your order, Adoption Agenda.
Second.
On adoption, all in favor? Questions carried. We have one delegation this afternoon. That's Blair Pettis regarding the extension request on Hector Road property. So Blair, if you could take the podium and welcome to the table.
Mr. Mayor, members of council staff, thank you for letting us be a delegation today. My name is Blair Pettis and I'm here today representing the owners of 2077 Hector Road and 941 Aspen Road. Mr. and Mrs. Longmans, the owners of 941 Aspen Road, are here today in the audience. And we're here today to request inclusion into the town's boundary. There's currently a 12-acre parcel that's in the town that is touching the subject properties on every side, and they have been undergoing preliminary development planning for several years. The concern is, is that planning should be done in the context of all the properties in the area. The request today is that these properties be brought into the town so that coherent planning, which will still take three to five years, can commence. The Comox Valley is a preferred location for people coming to the Comox Valley, but the lot supply of residential lots is not here. Any lots that you can find are $160,000 to $190,000 a piece. People bringing their pensions and equity to Comox want to own their own home. Providing homes that are affordable is difficult, but it is most feasible in the Aspen and Hector Road neighborhood. In our supporting documents, which you have, we do make note of the shift in investment to Campbell River. Perhaps that is an attributing factor is the lot supply in the Comox. There is good potential in this neighborhood for meeting the various community residential needs and to bring in a blend of new families to support growth and the commercial enterprises in Comox. The neighborhood is characterized by multifamily apartments, row houses, trailer park, and single-family. The properties seeking to be brought into Comox are recognized in the OCP and the Regional Growth Strategy. Bringing them into the town now would allow the necessary planning to begin. It will still take several years before these properties are able to allow families to move to Comox. Hence, the application is before you now. Water and sanitary servicing is available, and best practices in stormwater management will be the norm in Comox. These parcels have some land that will flow to the harbor for stormwater, and the remainder will flow to the Brooklyn watershed. In conclusion, a salient of land surrounded by the applicant properties is under development planning. Adjoining properties of 2077 Hector Road and Mr. and Mrs. Longmans' property at 941 Aspen seek inclusion into the town. There are several factors that support the logic of inclusion at this time, and your consideration of this is appreciated, and we request that the long process be started with your approval today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pettis, any questions?
Just answer that. Blair, how many lots can you get on a five-hector parcel, roughly? You know?
Can you convert that to acres for me?
Well, no, that's why I'm asking you.
Four, well, standard municipal residential lot is four per acre.
Okay.
A hectare is...
2.5 acres.
2.5 acres.
2.5.
2.5.
Okay.
10 per acre.
10.
That's standard.
Yeah.
You know, standard residential lot is 60-foot wide.
Yeah, gotcha.
Certainly, in this neighborhood, perhaps something more dense would be considered.
Okay.
But it's too early to say at this point.
Margaret. Thank you. Counsel Price?
Hi, yes, and thank you for the presentation. I don't know if you know that the plan has also included 2309 Latton Road. Do you know if the people there know of the application, whether they support it or not?
Yes, they do. We approached all the neighbors in this a year ago, and I don't have authority to speak for that gentleman. He is a land owner in Vancouver, and at this time, he is... Again, I stress I can't, I don't have authority to speak for him, but at the time, he was ambivalent. His final answer was, "Not at this time, not this year."
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your report on this matter. We'll be discussing it around me. All right, moving on to staff reports. We have the first quarter financial statement report. Where is he?
Second.
In his seat, then, all in favor? Questions? Members of council, Director Finance? Counsel Pritchard?
On page eight, there's the note in the second paragraph about accruals for Trevor's vacation and retirement. I assume we have accruals considered for as many of our staff may be retiring in the future. We have that considered in the bill?
Yes, CEO. Yes, ma'am. Counsel Director Finance?
Total payroll accruals the last year were almost $700,000. They cover sick time, bank time, vacation time, and an allowance for the meritorious service payout that occurs on retirement, all kind of discounted at present value to today.
All right, thank you. Any further? Counsel Price?
And we're also on the draft capital plan. Questions on the draft capital plan part of this...
Yeah, I guess it's just an update on things, yeah.
I just wondered, the parents north of Guthrie on page 11, when it's Hector Road and Service, is this the, this is the piece that goes to the public works yard? Wouldn't be the whole piece? Okay, it's the piece that's already paved, not the back piece. And just, you know, if there are any of the road widens that have vegetation implications, if you could, you know, mark them when...
Sorry, what implications?
Removal of trees from the road widening. It's always good to have that heads up at this capital planning stage.
Yeah.
In terms of the impact on the financial statements, or...
Well, just the knowledge, because usually it's, this is one of the stages where we see what's planned ahead for the year and the upcoming years, and it's just good to, seems like a good point to, to also know that information.
So you would like to see any plans for vegetation removal?
I'd like to know, you know, significant vegetation removal. It's always good to know if that's part of the road widening, ahead of road widening. I'm just thinking of the one that's...
Like the Stewart and Beaumont?
Yeah.
Or Bothford, sorry? Okay.
So, all right, so the direction that I'm supposed to take from this is that council would like to see if there's any impact on vegetation removal with road widening?
That probably wouldn't be the appropriate spot for a capital plan. If there's any issues, staff obviously incorporated a budget, and, you know, we went through the budget, we approved the budget. This is an update on where the projects are in terms of financial matters, as far as issues around how those projects are carried out. That's an operational issue that staff will deal with as best they can. So I'm not sure what you're driving at here.
I just, I don't know when is the appropriate time to have that heads up, I guess, and this is when we, you know, do learn about what's planned ahead. So if this isn't the appropriate place, wherever it's an appropriate place, if I could just flag that.
If council likes, just leave that with me. It'll give us some thought as to how we can incorporate a notification process to council.
Yeah, I think staff are learning all the time how to engage the public with various notifications to the contractors that are engaged through these projects. So Director Finance?
Your worship, I just wanted to explain the referenced 2014 draft capital plan. I mean, that just refers to the fact that when this document was prepared, we had not adopted the final capital plan. So the budget figures shown are the draft budget from the draft capital plan, right? Things have changed since then, so that's the only reason this is draft capital plan is just to let you know that these aren't the final budget numbers.
Sure. Okay, next. All right, anything else?
Well, this probably explains my question. The bylaw from Comox Avenue from King to Stewart, $56,000. I think that was subject to development, and development is not happening, so not in the final?
No, it is in the final.
It is in the final?
It's in the final, we adopted last week, yeah.
We didn't take it out again, but it's still...
But it won't go in?
Not unless that development goes in, right?
So the process, if there's a project that's not going to proceed this year, the typical process is we come to you with a list typically late in the year, and in fact, we would probably take it to the new council, right? We'd probably wait till, right till December, and then provide a list of projects that haven't been completed in a year to council, and we'll ask for permission to roll the unspent monies and the project forward to the next budget year, then continue on as if it's still in force.
Okay, anything further? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Page 17, this is the report again from Director Finance on inter-fund repayment terms, and the recommendation is set over the agenda.
Who's the recommendation?
That thing.
Any discussion on that? Counsel Price?
I think it's a great idea, and I guess as much as we can do that, that's...
Yeah, the important thing to note is a reduction in the term to eight years, which is good. That's consistent with what will be done in other filings, so good work on the Department of Finance for that. All right, anything further? Seeing none, all in favor? We now have the reports of the Planning Department, page 19, and I understand there may be a PowerPoint here as well from our planner regarding the new procedures, planning procedures by law and building by law minutes. Over to you, Mr. Planner.
So why are we presenting a new proposed procedure by law to our current bylaw date of 1996? It's quite of date in terms of planning issues have changed substantially since 1996, and now, and also planning legislation and community expectations have changed. In addition, this was specifically identified in the Council's strategic plan's goals and actions, so under the goals of reducing application processing times, we not only have instituted application processing timeline targets that we're seeking to maintain as the development cycle goes through its ups and downs, but is also as part of that was, in terms of streamlining, was to delegate additional permit issuing authority to staff. So those two were identified as actions in the strategic plan. Under the goal of high standard of customer service, the actual items were assist customers through the process, develop clear application process with checklist and application costs if necessary, and develop a process for customer feedback. While what's before you right now doesn't have very much because of customer feedback, it is actually based on some customer feedback that they've gotten over the last two years because council instituted these actions. So I'm now going to go through the key initiatives that are incorporated into the procedures about the old procedure by law and how that relates to those council strategic priorities. Public consultation, our current public consultation process does have a developer pre-application neighborhood consultation component, but that's limited to a strong recommendation from the planning department. There is no requirement in our procedures that that take place. And ever since we have the two applications of the townhouse project at Delmore, sorry, Bothford and Stewart, South West Corner and 700 Lancaster, both occurred at the same time. The one on Stewart should have been a lot more controversial, but that applicant did a two-stage process, where they wanted to enable the first and said, "I'm looking at doing townhouses, what are your concerns?" Then came out the second time and said, "Well, this is what I am proposing, showing you the drawing, this is how it relates to your concerns, and how I either accommodate them or why I can't." That went through very smoothly, and contrast, seven on Lancaster should have gone through a lot smoother, designated by the OCP for apartments, where they actually eliminated themselves in townhouses and patio homes. And the developers' comments on neighborhood consultation were, "Thank you for the recommendation, but I don't like doing them, and I will present a project that is good." And that project ended up in the one time that staff were directed to hold neighborhood public meetings because of the confusion and unrest in the neighborhood, and the project came forward. So under our current process, we don't have any guidelines. So again, that's getting me to council's directions in terms of clear guidelines and checklists. We don't have any guidelines regarding how to notify, so recently we had one come before, and questions always seem to come up being put back to the council that an individual from the public didn't get, wasn't notified. They weren't there, they were on holiday. No firm guidelines in terms of the holding of means or documentation in terms of what comes back to you, what's said to the public that is actually what being presented to you. So yes, we have had partial or non-compliance, public annual notice, accuracy reporting, and also probably what's coming up, we'll start with the project on Glacier View and Comox Avenue. We started to notice, and we get some high-profile sites, and they tend to have not just a neighborhood implications, but also a town-wide implications. So in that case, T21 Glacier View, the applicant talked to the neighbors, addressed a number of issues with the neighbors, the neighborhood, everything was going through, but then we did the public hearing with this, and we went and got concerns well beyond the neighborhood, raising the same concerns that already been addressed in the pre-application of the neighborhood. And you have a rear, quite a rear door action trying to get that information out of the resident neighborhood. We're also currently having APC reform on. We have had issues with that. Recruitment's been a big issue over the last eight years. Administration, it is quite heavy in terms of demands to set up meetings, arrange meetings, when do we have a plan, do we not have a plan? Some concerns have come back through the development community in terms of consistency and accountability, that sort of unknown goalposts, there's no, nothing to be finding as members of the APC. APC members have also expressed frustration in terms of the limitation to only recommend versus, and council had that deciding role, and when that does get activated, general unease or unhappiness on the APC. Also, in terms of actually implementing the OCP objectives and policies, if they don't agree with them, there's a desire to not set new policy and apply it on application in process as opposed to what has been adopted by the community and council. We now have very comprehensive development permit guidelines that are highly scrutinized by staff prior to coming through, so that really takes that sort of where their role versus the technical role is, becomes a fucking issue, and a desire in terms of to express a public opinion, their post opinion, or their own quasi-technical opinion on that. So what we looked at here was in terms of, again, reducing application processing timelines, meeting our targets, and assisting customers through the process, and clear process with checklist and application costs. So what's proposed in the bylaw is to, the ability to require the developer undertake pre-application neighborhood consultation in accordance with set meeting requirements, and town option for, that's right, an option for town-held public information meetings, and that would be APC. So the, in terms of that pre-application consultation, the, that, if there is a limit in the bylaws, so that would only apply to multifamily residential, so it would not apply to single-family applications, it would not apply to duplexes, coachhouses. In terms of commercial and industrial, there is a limit in terms of, for mixed-use commercial and industrial, would have to be involving 200 square meters or more, and you would replace them in a close-floor area. So what, very much it'll come forward, need on presentation, the idea of trying to create two streams, one for major applications, and one for minor applications or a lot more property owner-initiated type of developments or applications.
Tom, sorry, Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to this requiring a developer to do this pre-application neighborhood consultation, you're not going to have anything to show them. So are you thinking just knocking on doors and talking, or, because if you were to hold a public meeting and you have nothing to show them, you know, it just might be a little awkward, and I'm just trying to see how...
What we want to follow on, what we've been recommending since the Stewart development in terms of, first off, go to your neighbors and just knock on the door and say, "I am proposing a townhouse development on this site. What are your concerns?" Then, at the same time dealing with staff, then going back and showing a draft site plan and/or elevations, and saying, "This is how I propose to develop it, this is how I would address your concerns." We really noticed that in terms of the two developments, Stewart versus 700 Lancaster, 700 Lancaster did more big-ticket items. They did building articulation, they did drop from apartments to only townhouses and patio homes, saying the neighborhood won't accept it. And I still remember to this day, holding that information meeting, and after going through and answering all those questions, a gentleman stood up very serious, and nobody was laughing in the audience, and said, "We showed up, or you're going to, you have to give us something." And that was, so all that pre-work was gone. There was no lying, because the public didn't see any of that occurring before they raised their concerns. So we really find that sort of two-stage process very beneficial.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it. I just wanted to understand what form it was going to take. And so if it's knocking on doors, then, you know, you're going to articulate that in the procedure by law, or just in your application process?
Under this proposed bylaw, everything except for the forms of permits, staff would have the ability to create and modify as needed. So really what we're looking at there is providing guidelines that address, I mean, some developers do very well with door knocking, and on small developments, you want to do a door knocking. Other ones like, or because of the number of properties involved, want to have a meeting in a public space. And we would address both those options.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And the option for the town-held public information, that's really to get at things like the hotel and the water fund. So when council feels that this application is of such magnitude that the public is going to want to have input early in the process, and it's going to be beyond the neighborhood, that council has that option to say, "We wish to hold..." You receive a director report typically, "We wish to hold a town-wide meeting," and that will be staffed by town staff, and the public will be then shown exactly what's applied for, and information will come forward. What I just addressed that comment, well, why are you asking us at public hearings the same security meeting? This gives council that flexibility.
Sorry, would that be similar to what you did recently for the Bothford property with the gateway, that kind of format? The Stewart, you know, boards and people gathering?
It can be, yeah. I mean, in that case, we were, and we did it even pre-application, but what I would envision is once an application comes in, and we would have the application, drawing boards there, and presentation and comment sheets come forward.
Thank you.
Delegations, so currently we do have delegation powers. Two delegated, a federal council approval authority, two delegated to staff. They've worked quite well in limited roles. That's for development approval information, environmental development permits. Under both of those situations, the applicant has the right if they're dissatisfied with staff decision or an aspect of staff decision to appeal to council. So when we expand delegation powers, that is always built in, that ability to the applicant to appeal to council.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like just to add in there that if the applicant does appeal, that that appeal goes to the next available council meeting. You know, so, I mean, the whole idea is to streamline the process, right? And oftentimes, you know, someone might be under the impression, "Oh, yeah, you have an appeal," but it's going to be six months down the road. And, you know, I'd just like to see that, you know, some sort of a fast-tracking of an appeal process as well.
Yeah, we really, we looked at putting it in the bylaw itself, the problem was, we can get so many different types of appeals, in terms of something that's very simple, and the matter goes to council on the next available agenda, to something that requires further research in terms of what the objections are, the implications of the objections, and might generate a staff report. But either case, while we didn't put it in the bylaw itself, the intent is the next available council meeting, we're going to get the information the council will go and want. So it would be not put in a back burner, it would be in under the priority processing in streaming category.
All right. Counsel Price?
I'm referring to page 31, number six, where it says, "A requirement issued under section 85 must identify, or identify the nature substance of extent of the development approval information required, and may also," and then there's a lot of "yes." I'm wondering, under what circumstances, when you say "may," there might be, there's positive discretion involved. I'm wondering what circumstances would be, and secondly, is it vastly different from what's already happening now?
No, this is almost related from our current delegation by law. So what it really is getting at is sometimes we want to know the impact on an area or base, a lot of it is sometimes the baseline. So for example, we did the traffic study on 225 Anderson, wanted to know what is the current traffic situation, what is going to be anticipated, at that time we specified what's going to be anticipated through the development, what is going to be anticipated in terms of the official, when the surrounding property is built up in accordance with the OCP. So depending on exactly what we're looking at, we can then expand it in terms of looking at the past and in the future. And a lot of this too gives the developer some certainty in terms of, if you're going to say what you want, say it specific enough that, "I'm not bringing you report." It can always happen, but minimize the risk, "Bring you report," you say, "That's really nice, but what I really meant was..." Typically, we don't add up, we don't add in all those other items. Traffic, we look at surrounding issues and everything else. And a lot of that came back from the public, and the public coming up and saying, "What about this, and what about this?" And that would have allowed us to build that in specific.
So they would, they would know this ahead of time, they would know what they have to provide, and...
Two issues. They would either do, we currently offer, and it's codified in here, is the legislation does this in terms of the town receives an application, and then gets to look at the application and say, "I want to have this information," and it has to be then written in form. It can't be verbal, it's an actual written form. It's chicken and egg a lot of times for developers. For example, you're dealing with access, what is right, "Well, where do you want it? Here or there? My building's going to look totally different. Why would I want to give you the whole design application, and then you tell me, 'Oh, what? A traffic study that's going to realize that.'" What we issue then is a preliminary letter, said, "Based on the limited understanding, these are the information that we want to see." That's done before application, under the understanding that we can revise that. So we do try to get around that.
Counsel Price?
I just had one quick question on page 35, number three, and I just want clarification on this, is the municipal planer may decide that for sole discretion not to exercise any delegated authority, and then it should become a council decision? You would let the developer know that at the earliest possible time, I would imagine, because it would be a different presentation, you might need to figure it out.
Typically, we would let the, we would try to let the developer know that at the time of initial consultation with the department. If something came up, i.e., it looked like it was going to be relatively straightforward in accordance with set council practice of past decisions, and the neighborhood's votes.
Yeah.
That might happen, but further down the process.
Yeah, but their concern was that, that they know, you know, that they'd be given notice as soon as possible, just because they've got to develop presentations and all that kind of stuff. So they don't want to drop on, say, "By the way, next week," you know? so.
And what we really wanted to do there too is, council, town has a, has a bit of a history now in terms of doing some innovative regulations, and not only council, but the public being very concerned on how that plays a, like, secondary source. Very concerned at first, it then becomes routine. So what this gives us the opportunity is the ability to say, "Okay, this is, this is all, you're going to council." As it becomes routine, we can then say, "Staff, councils already got a good precedent, they've got a good feel, this is not gonna be delegated, we're gonna deal with it on a staff level, we don't have to amend the bylaw." We can start floating with that. And that's, again, minimizing processing times, minimizing staff resources, otherwise we have to, we have to revise the bylaw each time, and come forward to you and craft a law.
So the other one that I had, you know, maybe, hopefully this is the right time, on your time limitations for inactive applications, and you, 90 days for in-process and 90 days for completion of outstanding items.
Yes.
And then you become inactive. Whoa, 90 days, you could still be dealing with some of your outstanding items. So that seems a bit quick to me.
Yes.
And was suggested that perhaps 180 days might be a more reasonable?
It does have a number of safeguards, the, so we have, we're additional information for the application, 90 days, that's the first one.
Page 21.
Yeah, on page, sorry, 37.
Oh, yeah, 37.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, under 3, under 14.3, it gives the 90 days. But under 14.4, right away it says that you can, at the time of giving that conditional approval, already specify something in above 90 days. So if you have a complex one, and of course the applicant has the ability to make that representation to council, in terms of saying, "Hey, listen, this is gonna, this is gonna be complex, we would want to have more than 90 days," and then that can be expanded. So in terms of going, council gives that conditional approval, they can set something different. And under 5, there is two exemption periods, or extension periods, they can appeal directly to the municipal planner for, and, or council, and then council can even go, municipal planner can't, but council can go beyond the 180 days. So it can ramp up quite substantially. Majority of our applications, the 90 days, we're, we're usually looking at legal agreements, and the 90 days works pretty good, with legal agreements.
So what, what's the rationale for 90 days? I mean, it just, it seems to me it's not, it's not very long, that's more.
30 days is usually what it takes, to have to.
Okay.
And it's usually all we're doing is registering legal agreements, typically the outstanding items, so we're usually only running at the 30 days. And it's just a matter of simplicity for tracking.
Okay, and if we found that this was too tight for most, and we could change that sometime?
You could change it without even changing the bottom line, so all you have to do then is, as a matter of course, it is.
Make, make it 120 days or something.
Is given, subject to coming up, resolution of the outstanding items within 200 days, you can just make that under residential standards.
Okay. That's Price.
Yes, and, page 35, on three again, and, I think it's great that that power is there, that the municipal planner can choose not to take the delegated power and take the application strictly to council. Is it possible, or, also to include that council could also choose to, if an application is perceived to be very controversial, could council also have that power to choose to take an application back? Is that something that is legally possible? Probably would not be something that perhaps would ever be used.
No, I mean, the way that the staff keeps it written, council has the authority to delegate, and then they have the authority to put limits on delegation, and so leave it. But a quasi, sort of soft delegation that way, isn't, essentially is not permitted, because it's not ascertainable. The, this is written, and it's strictly in wording, we've already put this in here, "We can do it for reasons of complexity, visibility, or other, other circumstances. Unless directed otherwise by council." I got an application, and I think it's simple, and the idea blows up, and we start receiving letters, it's gonna turn around and stop and say, "Congratulations, I've now refused to process this, and you're going to be canceled." Idea is, it's not in anybody's interest to, for the planner to proceed with situations like that.
So safeguards in there, anywhere?
I'll be honest with you, if you, if you, an egotistical planner who doesn't wanna listen to council, you'll be firing the letter, or you'd be writing the bylaw.
Again, this delegation is for development permits, heritage development permits, and collectible to smaller duplexes and so on, and also for the floodlights. So we're not talking about delegate, and obviously, I, the OCP.
Yeah, I mean, even a strategic conversion, the councils and their formal housing policy said, "We've never had a problem with conversion of commercial buildings," or a strategic conversion of commercial or industrial. Deplexes are under the Housing, uh, Formal Housing Policy, waived, and I only allow them, regardless of, of vacancy rates. Beyond that, it's a matter of vacancy rates, and those tenants and the location laws, that power to deal with strategic conversions above duplex has not been delegated, that would be as permanent as council.
Right.
So, we've already talked about most of these things, so again, it's getting into trying to meet our processing timeline and targets, streamlining, providing, trying to provide that guidance for the development, in terms of what is required, and guiding them through the process. Development permits, so what would be delegated? Development permits, heritage alteration permits, frontage exemptions, both the 10% frontage requirement, it's under the statute, plus the minimum parcel frontage requirement is in zoning bylaw, all of those can be delegated, because neither one is actually, the zoning minimum parcel frontage is not a zoning power, it's in zoning bylaw, but it's not a zoning power, it's under, 194 of the local covenant. Strategic conversions, we've talked about, right about an applicant to appeal, and the generation of forms, applications checklist, and how-to guides, for our next project. Fees, so current, we do rezonings anywhere from application fee of 1,650 to 2,890. And what, we do a cumbersome process whereby we say, site-specific or development-specific documents, the documents that covenants have to be developed. But they have the option to provide a security bond, that varies between $500 to $1,000 per legal document, which we then use to pay down, pay our lawyer to do the work, and then anything additional, we stock work, we get additional bond, and it's, anything left over at the end is refunded, it's extremely cumbersome for the applicant, it's extremely cumbersome for town staff, and all the planning department, also finance in terms of tracking The current fees, in terms of reduced fees, we have the coach house, 250. Tax amendments are actually quite high, 1,980 in this one, in the case of people trying to listen to the community. We've heard that that is stifling things like consideration of additional home occupation uses, or additional uses for some, in some commercial and industrial zones that we haven't thought of as a part of conditions change. Okay, so, thanks to this, I won't go over it, it's all the same points. So we're looking at maintaining the current cost recovery rate, so we're not, we're not on a cost recovery, full of cost, cost recovery basis on per-perfect rates, given the slow economic times that we're in, you don't really perceive this as a time to increase that rate. So we try to maintain those, by only increase costs for new services, and scaling the processing requirements and fees, the size and complexity, so we'll see built-in, up to the bylaw, you have differentiation between major and minor amendments and zoning amendments. In terms of the major, those are the ones that we perceive as possibly having public information needed, that's the one off, that's by council. We're currently, our, the reports in here are, we're currently running around 1,000, we're wanting to be public ads, public carrying, those ads, we're running at 1,000 for two ads, considering issues to table. So what we did was, we tackled, probably the average of, say, 250, so generally, we was a bit up to the allowance of 250 for application, and that would be worked out, even in terms of one every four applications of council, which is. So, we'll find, there is a reduced fee proposed for addition or deletion of industrial or commercial use in the zone, the, not, unless directed otherwise by council, so that fee would drop down from, to $1,000. Tax amendment would drop down to $300. We would want to go in bylaw next week, pull out the deletion. So second, we're deleting a use, we can be making legal non-conformity, which is quite complex and controversial, so we'll pull that one out. Addition of home occupation use, so right now our home occupation, right, from our series of regulations, like no employees, and then they have listed permitted uses. The idea is that we reduce that fee down to $500, only for the addition of a permitted use, not altering the regulation, like, wow, no employee, or something like that. I would make that clarification of the model that comes forward, it's not really the greatest in schedule A, right? So, again, we average the fees, what we assume the fees would be for different types of documents. So major rezoning, we're typically running into the phase development agreement, which is customize the phase development agreement, covenant, miscellaneous covenant, like a slugline national plan, or a grid separator, tree covenant, SRLB, so that's five. We've got, we're getting the costs down from our start of about 1,000 down to 500, so we've averaged, we've increased the fee on that, including the legal component, 200, 2,500, and that was on the grid. That's minor rezonings, we figure that typically we're running two, and then floodplain exemption we got, and then we run one, we just made a covenant to register the geosite before one title.
So essentially what you're saying there is that the fee that you pay will cover the legal costs, isn't it?
For those custom-specific items, we would still then be doing standard ones, like if somebody had a hedge covenant, or a tree retention, most, most tree retention covenant is set for multifamily, we have a standard template, and we would be giving that to the applicant, saying, "Here, you go, put in, put in your site plan, and put in your legals." And if something beyond those standard covenants came up, we would then, yes, be doing that custom work, we would be dealing with the initial cost.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
I have a question, but I, I gave this to the chair of the developers group at the Economic Development Society to go through, and they were really pleased to see this, and, and, I mean, he had some really minor things that we discussed already, but they just saw this as a really good step in clearing up and making sure that people understood what they were doing. The fees didn't seem to be a big issue to them, I mean, they'd like it for free, of course, but that's not realistic, so they just viewed that as a cost of doing business, and that's what you have to do. But all in all, they were, they were really pleased to see this, and, and very complimentary of how it was done.
Thank you, yeah, and that's, that's what we were kind of assuming, that the major, we were suddenly getting into the professional developers, and their time is more important than the seasonal. Thank you.
Okay, another hand, sir, ready?
Thank you, great one, thank you, appreciate it. Just back to the, the comment earlier about those, those pre-meetings, either the knocking on the neighborhood, or what, I would question, how, how would that be recorded? How would you expect them to, to present something back to us, and, A, we'd know where they went, and what they said, and, and what the feedback was? Is there something?
So what we'd say is, and City of Corning already has some of these guidelines, because they, they require them for quite a while, we'd say, all properties, all tenants, not property owners within 75 meters, place a notice, and first of all, the place a notice in their mailbox, advising either knock on their door, and if you want to talk to them, and if they're not there, place the notice in the mailbox, saying, giving your contact information, what is proposed, so that gets over the "nobody told me" part. And then in terms of, when you do talk to them, providing a comment sheet, so they're able to fill in their comments directly, and then providing that to, to the town. And then in terms of, probably on stage two, where it says, you would say, "What material did you present?" And that you presented, site plans. And that would evolve as we get more understanding of it.
Okay, so, they, they send us a copy of what they presented, and then comment sheets of what they heard back, we get that as a package?
Yes, and that we're getting it directly from the person, and you're not starting to get into this, and it, it puts them in a bad, you know, it's very hard to summarize somebody's comments on your work, and as best as you do, it's always best to handle.
I'm just assuming, sorry.
With them again.
When you're saying we would get it back, though, it would go to you, not them?
Correct, but that would be part of the initial report to you, so that you would see that. So yeah, very much like when we do our, our public consultation, when they give you a summary or something like that, but you always also get an attachment, or somehow distributed to the actual comment sheets.
That's from Ken.
And Grant. Just, again, compliments for the idea, it seems to be it accomplishes two goals, and that's the intent to streamline the process for homeowners with development ideas and developers, but just as important, it encourages earlier public consultation, and while maintaining the, the old consultation opportunities in public hearings, and maintains safeguards for council, or overriding authority, so it seems to, to handle, handle it all, and I'm pleased with how I see it.
That's a done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see this as being a huge checkmark on our strategic plan, you know, some of the action items that we have, and I wanna compliment you on the work that you've done, because when you start getting feedback from the development community that we're on the right track, I think that...
That's been, we've gotten a lot of it lately.
No, I, I know, I see it as just a major checkmark, thank you for your work.
Any further, Patty?
And I guess the only piece that I was, I was uncomfortable with was the loss of the ABC. And I know, many years back when I sat on it, one of the, I, one of the finest pieces of it was the school district, 71 represented students, represented, and I don't know if that's been removed from that committee, but it just speaks to that opportunity, A, to engage our community, that we need to engage the youth, and I know we seem to struggle a little bit, but, that, that would be my one discipline. And maybe it's been gone for years and.
Um, depends on, on the teachers, in terms of, this is very, how, generally, the students are excellent, or, but it's just a matter, sometimes dealing with something that's going on, we want to claim something to that.
Well, we've been getting them earlier, actually, a great treaty to come. From the mayor, and from other people, the Brownies, and the girl guys, I mean, there's always and means of engaging.
The only thing I was gonna say about the APC, because I sat on the APC and, and the Edgery Design Panel for years, and when you have difficulty getting a quorum, you know, the, the whole development process just grinds to a halt, and, you know, what we, through our strategic plan, we tasked the planning department to come back with a way to streamline the approval process, and I see that as being a huge step forward, and, you know, regrettably, some things do fall by the wayside, but, that was a major stumbling block, trying to get a, a quorum, and on and on, it goes, especially if something's happening in the summertime, you know, I think you're all over three months trying to get it through the APC.
And certainly, we've seen a balanced proposal of the APC with clearly and often into public consultations, so, as Pastor Ken pointed out, you're trying to balance those things out, and I think we've achieved the right balance here.
That's Price.
Yes, and, and thank you, it was a really good work in the, the development, pre-application stage, I think that's a really good piece, that, as you say, people know what's happening with the public more likely, and, and can also have some impact on it, and let, let it be advised. I, I also did share some concerns about the loss of the APC. Is, is this something that other communities are seeing too, where APCs, um, not standard picture? picture?
Given that survey, or in terms of the public saying, um, it's nice whatever you have, uh, whatever proxies you have, we want to be heard directly, whether through that is, it's, it's, it doesn't matter, but somebody else does, does not, they want to be able to, we have concerns.
Corning hasn't had one for years, they, they, Kai Boshers after the Walbert. So, we need a motion, uh, to bring these to council for first, second, and third reading, both bylaw.
I would like to move, uh, that the Pomars planning procedure by about seventeen eighty and seventeen eighty-two be forwarded to council for first, second, and third reading.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Okay, good discussion, good work. Well, I'll be counsel next week. All right, so, moving on then to the matter that was relevant to the delegation earlier, which is the boundary extension request, uh, in two fifty-three of the staff report and recommendations, uh, we perceive with the inclusion of twenty-three oh-nine McDonald Road, that council staff be authorized to develop science. So, move that to second. Can you move the second into discussion? Officer.
Um, so, I was a bit confused by the delegation indicating, I, I thought what I heard was that the twenty-three oh-nine McDonald Road wasn't desiring to be included.
In case of some affidavits, perhaps.
Yeah, because certainly for me, that's the tie, otherwise you have a bit of a gap. And so, I wonder if that one's probably, maybe they have some conversation, such as that problem.
We, we haven't yet, uh, as part of, if council authorize us to, to begin this process, that would be part of the conversation, part of the consultation. Uh, at the end of the day, from, from a planning perspective, we would want to include this within the discussion, and when it comes to, uh, the decision coming from the province, it could be, a majority of the landowners, a majority would be very involved, that, at the end of the day as well. So, it, uh, at this preliminary stage, what I understand is that this property that I've added at the staff level is a holding property that is, his interest is in development at some stage. Can you force him to develop, but we can engage him in the discussion on that at some stage. And ultimately, the province probably wouldn't allow this, uh, so-called donut holder stay there. So, that probably is why we're considering analogy, because we otherwise meet the criteria of argument.
I have a thing, I think, that point two, in the, uh, province is quite clear, you can't leave a piece of land that's surrounded by these boundaries, that the application. And, um, yes, and I appreciate the application coming forward, I, I will not be supporting it, and I do think that annexation of these rural lands is premature, and, um, particularly considering the potential drainage challenges, which could be costly in the short or long term, and, uh, it's also, um, ad hoc and without a rational boundary. So, um, whenever we move our services outside of the boundaries, it's, uh, it's always something to consider, so, I have a.
Thank you. Any further comments, any further discussion? Seeing none, you ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed? No opposed, motion's great. Okay, we're now at the bylaw seventeen seventy-six, which is the perks of public releases bylaw for consideration for the council for first, second, and third reading. Okay. All right, so, move the second, and we do have our parks director here, if any questions. We know that it does include, um, a schedule of potential fines, um, which are on page seventy-four, and, uh, of course, there's also the option to proceed with a long-term prosecution, which is the other preference to probably, although that's unlikely that would happen, this is the case with many of our bylaws of this nature. So, Council Fletcher.
Uh, I have some concerns on this, and I think really what it boils down to is, I'm seeing pieces in our town, and it'd be on page seventy, uh, item K, the use of the tennis court, running sport other than tennis. I feel like, you know, it's very good time, I see people using the task sports for other things, whether it's a little child learning how to ride a bicycle, or maybe somebody's doing some dog training in a confined situation, and I think, what's wrong with multi-use of sounding facilities? That's my comment on that one. And then, the next one, where you cannot ride or operate your device propelled by steam or battery power, because there are some trails or paved pathways. I think that's unfortunate, but someone who might have mobility issues couldn't go across a green park, not feel as if they were, um, repeating the bylaw. I, I think we need to think more, more about that. If more and more people will be on mobility, uh, machines and will be battery-powered, and I think we should welcome them to go wherever they want. Is it going to impact maybe the service or whatever? Yes, but there's citizens that contribute to it.
Well, I'm sure that our perks would be designed in such a way that they can get on trails or paved pathways, and you'll imagine you want to see too many people bogged down in the middle of their perks. There's one thing.
But if they wanted to go across, and that brings me to the next one, the dogs, and it brings back the dog issue again, and I just think, what a shame that we have these playing fields that ninety percent of the day, there's no one on the playing field. Great, the kids come out and play soccer or baseball at the end of the day, but through the majority of the morning or afternoon, what I see are people with their dogs. And I say, good on them, I've heard that people are now getting ticketed, I've heard there are dogs being on open playing fields, and I think, what a shame. Um, yes, yes, we've had the dog bylaw before, but I think it's time to reconsider that there's a lot of citizens that have dogs, and they can control them and pick them out and, uh, that's the key.
Well, maybe I can get our parks director to speak to the issues that are raised under the A and L, as far as the tennis courts, and the scooters stuck in the mud or whatever you're doing, but, um, as far as the dogs, I guess, I believe that we're doing nothing here other than consistent with our current.
In, in terms of multi-use that applies to tennis courts, I mean, it's, uh, it's terribly disheartening when you go over and invest all of this money and effort into designing a tennis facility, and all of a sudden, you've got people skateboarding in there, playing roller hockey in there, um, which, which has wear and tear and destroy, you know, just destroys the surface that we just gave an extraordinary amount of money to lay down. So, I mean, there would be some uses that it, that I think would be acceptable if it was not damaging, and I think, uh, I think, and I can't think of any examples right now, but, um, I certainly want, wouldn't want to see some of the uses that I witnessed over that time, and, um, skateboarding is a big one that I have an issue with, uh, because it does create a lot of damage. In terms of people on, on mobility scooters and such, I think it's a discretionary, uh, observation as well. I can't think of any of us that would go after somebody purposely, unless we're going to rescue them from their, you know, possibly bogged down. And yes, we will continue to make every provision that we can, with any reason, with legal considerations, to provide access and address any problems for elderly challenged folks, but, uh, I, I, I don't think we would come down too terribly, I mean, if we saw somebody going across, um, an area in such a, a device. I personally haven't had any interaction with anybody like that, and I, I, I don't know if that's happening out there.
All these bylaws, like any enforcement bylaw, is subject to the discretion of bylaws or appropriate staff, and there's still, I don't see us getting tickets to some girls trying to learn how to run a bike and a tennis court. But, uh, you have to have the bylaws in place for people, unfortunately, who've used certain privileges and rights, that's the nature, nature of it.
By and large, most people that are using their facilities are fairly conscientious of, you know, form and function and, and others, and, and uses, there are variations of, at the time, but, uh, usually with some, some education, just general cooperative kindness, it goes all these matters in the field.
And we had major confrontations a number of years ago between skateboarders and tennis players, which led in large part to the dedication of skateboard park with the city Corning, and again, significant expenditure. So, I mean, we do have to direct those activities to the appropriate bases and places for them. You know, really, as far as the, the dog issue goes, I mean, we're not doing anything other than much reference to our current bylaws, making reference to that in the parks bylaws, so that people have a clear understanding. The ticket issue, it's, I mean, I can't speak to what the bylaw officer here has recently done in the past few months, but there was an issue with, uh, apparently the regional district's enforcement officer, apparently hanging out at the entrance to these woods in their torrents, and public works shared, and somehow understanding that that was regional district laws, and may or may not have been tickets issued at that point for that. Mystery has now been solved, and, uh, that person is not there, so there was a bit of a urban myth going around about that, and, uh, you know, our bylaw officer has to use this discretion, and presumably continue to be so under careful. We're unpacking at this point, uh, creating spaces for that, council is starting to plan to that issue, and the council will future mention these as well. But these are bylaws that are collected once apparently in place. Yep.
Okay, I, I recently heard that there have been dog owners that have been, um, met by the bylaw officer, and they asked to be in there.
Yes. And I actually had a gentleman come to speak to me about that. I explained to him the rationale behind that, and that is assured use facility with this as a stream as well. And the concerns are valid, and we'll each bylaws do apply it as they do in any other park. And I, again, I end again speaking, maybe to stop, maybe stop this speech, yes, that a bylaw officer doesn't run out there with a book of tickets, that's not the first step, it's just an approach, an education. And, uh, I explained to this particular gentleman, the discussions that we've had at this council team, a lot of them are show parks, and the opportunities that are available to dog owners in the period of coincidence that we're having to develop some, we do have to develop, so the cost of maintaining those fields and who uses them, and who we share them. So, you know, there has to be some responsibility taken by the owners for knowing those rules. And I believe our bylaw officer does a pretty good job as a former city council officer, educating first before, and I think it's, I don't know much more than that.
That's, that's, but, uh, it's a, it's an action that's caused due to some complaints we perceive, um, of, of owners not picking up after their dogs on the playfield, as well as, you know, basically wearing, wearing into the field, uh, non, uh, playfield type of use. It's dogs that are running up and down, kind of straight, in a consistent line, that are wearing, uh, wearing turf down, which again, causes this, more of a issue. So, it's, it's, it's not something that we've done, and we do try and ask the owners to move to different areas and in these different areas of the community, and at different times, so there's not conflict, but, you know, sliding into second, and I'm getting a pile of food isn't funny.
Those are all, those are sandbags fields somewhere in Highland, and the cost of maintaining those is a lot higher, but they play longer because of how they drink there. As soon as you start digging, yeah, I mean, there's not much surface there before you 're in sand, and then you start to lose, uh, the turf, and so, much different than, say, uh, turf, it's who I've got their ups and their downs, or, uh, or against their ups and downs. But, I mean, I guess it's up to council what they want to do, to reopen up old data, it's certainly not what we're talking about here today. Um, and as I explained to the gentleman who came to see me, I said, you know, if there's a groundswell of support for an off-leash dog park, and, you know, people wish to make submissions to councils, where that might be, certainly break it forward, but we've had some very minor interest in it over the years. Uh, since we've been a council, we had one person come over, so we had twelve letters, so there was one we put it up in public. And in the ground scheme of things, it's not that big of an issue, other than to an individual. There's a group of people that want to close something, that wear and then, and when our bonus is, we entail them to, in terms of liability costs, and it's, uh, other people treasure our parks for all those reasons, and we consider all their uses and play. So, I don't know if there's any more in terms of comments on specifics of this bylaw, that , uh, we're seeking direction to bring to council. First, second, and third reading has been moved, and second, and, to be able to further special.
Well, just one last comment, I appreciate Council Fletcher's comments, but I don't think it's ever a perfect situation with a bylaw officer or with an R C P officer, that they make judgment calls, and they use the word educational nature, and, uh, it's never going to be black and white, but a bylaw officer is going to look at a dog owner differently if they have, uh, apparatus to pick up after, and somebody who doesn't have it to pick up after, or if the dog owner has good manners towards the bylaw officer, just like the R C P, uh, towards the R C P officer. I, I think it's with good intentions, and, uh, I think we do the best we can and help faith in our bylaw officer.
All right, you ready for the question? What, all those in favor? Any opposed? One item, of course, wanted to see here, this, uh, apparently is somewhat time-sensitive, so I ask not for council to grant approval for this event being placed here first, running from Highland School all the way through to the Estelle first. Can you put a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We do have Ryan and Cameron meeting, and we'll share the school with public, under seven ninety-one B and E. All right. We'll brief move to.